I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thanks for coming. We're here tonight because every so often the board thinks that we need to get together with department heads to figure out where we're at quarterly and so we've left tonight open to meet with fire, highway, and the police department. So, I'm not sure we have any really direct pointed questions, but rather just an open conversation to kind of touch base and communicate issues, non-issues, and budget conversations. So, Randall, do you need to put anybody to bed, or can we start with you?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna start with the highway department. If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, just so that those at home can hear you, because it's a well-known fact that if you're in the audience sitting there talking, nobody can hear you. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. So, I guess I have a few, I guess I have the same questions for all the departments, but you wanna just tell us what's happening at the highway department? Any new news, old news, or anything we need to know about?
I guess nothing specific. We're working on sweeping roads. We're hoping all the snow and ice are done for the year. General, spring cleanup, fixing some dirt roads, patching potholes, and trying to get ready for the construction season for paving. All of our materials are bid out by H-Cog and our estimates were due last week or the week before, so all those have gone in. So...
So they do it at the same time as the cafeteria stuff, I see.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Did you start the project over in Conant Park with the...
We haven't. We're waiting for it to dry out a little more. We staged some stone there while we thought the ground was frozen, but the truck started sinking in, so we got a couple loads over there and the rest is at the highway garage.
Okay. Are you almost done sweeping the streets?
No. We have probably two or three more weeks to go.
Okay.
Do you do a second sweep? Well, you got my streets so early, I didn't get a chance to take my sand off my lawn. I went out there and went down and you got it done already.
Yeah, it was a short day, so we stayed close to the shop.
Is there a place then where you can take sand and dump it when you clean it off your lawns and all that?
Good question. Yeah, probably at the highway garage. We could find a spot.
Okay, thanks.
Is the sweeper in good condition?
Our mechanic keeps it in pretty good working order. It broke down a couple times last year. We've replaced a couple minor parts this year. It's 16 years old, I think, 16 or 18 years old.
How many minutes does it have on it?
I don't know.
Does it even have a...
It probably has an hour meter, but I'm not sure.
Hour meter?
Yeah.
So, I guess let's talk about your fiscal '15 budget.
Okay.
Do you happen to have revenue reports or expenses?
Yes, I have the most recent revenue report through April 2nd.
Okay, so my question is, hold on, let me make sure I'm looking at the right one. When you look at the revenue report that's current, and we estimated that we're gonna be around $17,000 in revenues, currently, we're only at $1,600.
Oh, I don't have the revenue. I have the expense.
So I'm just like, to me, that's a little concerning. What is that all about?
Well, I guess it depends. Our big revenue numbers are when a subdivision goes in, and I know there are a couple that are proposed, but haven't gone past that phase. So those revenues haven't come in yet. We have smaller chunks that are generated through permits, trenching permit, curb cut, and permit to work in a public way. And I can't see that we've issued any fewer of those. We seem to, I've issued quite a few.
And as far as your expenses are concerned, it looks like the wages are right on track.
Okay.
I mean, we're about three-quarters of the way through, a little more than three-quarters of the way through the year, so I mean, percentage-wise, it looks like we're where we need to be. The expenses are only at about 50%, so is there anything major that you see coming down the road that...
We'll be spending some of that when we start grading the dirt roads and paving. There are some expenses that aren't, can't be applied to Chapter 90 or other funding sources. So, I know the road machinery maintenance looks high, but it is what it is. We've had to repair a lot of equipment.
Do you anticipate going much over your budget in that line?
We're gonna try not to. We're gonna try and manage it.
Right. John or Jack, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, just the only thing that's over is winter roads, but that's expected with this kind of winter. I think guys did a great job again this year.
Yep.
Hopefully, you pass along our thanks to them. It's one of the towns where you go and the roads are clean when you need them to.
Glad to hear it. The guys will be too. Some of them are certainly watching.
Yeah, well, that's great.
Mrs. Willness, if you have a question, go ahead.
Can I ask you, do you know if the park area will be safe for opening day parade for SYAs for the kids to walk through that area, May 2nd?
There's fencing around the washout.
Oh, like that area from the pavilion over to the park?
Yeah, go by the police station down, go by the library, walk over that bridge area behind the dugouts and do opening day first throw out.
Then I would say that that's not a good route this year.
Okay.
I would go around...
That's a good question.
We're leaving tomorrow night, so let's pick on the rest.
So I'm glad that Chief Silverman is here. Is it unreasonable to think that we just walk a little farther and make the parade a little longer and go up?
Either up Clark or...
Yeah, what's that road right after the pool there? If you go past the library and you take that first right, what is that road?
Clark Street.
Clark Street. So is that something that you think would cause a big problem if they changed the parade? No. I mean, it makes it a little longer, but at least you can get around it.
I don't know. There are sidewalks on Route 10, correct, Chief, on this side?
There's an uneven old sidewalk on the opposite side of the road.
But there are no sidewalks on Clark.
True.
So I don't know which would be better.
Obviously, heavier to travel.
Right.
That would suggest more.
Even with a sidewalk?
You don't really have the fire truck.
It's not a complete sidewalk.
Oh, okay, okay.
You could close off Clark Street for as long as it takes to walk down the road?
Yeah, they're gonna have a...
It's not much further from the park than where we always go to Clark Street.
Yeah, it's not. No, okay. Good question.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Randall? Is there anything that we can do to help you, Randall? Now's your time.
I usually let you guys know when I need something.
You know, one question. How is the clearing of the property up, is it Former Road or Russellville Road?
Oh, on Former Road.
Former Road. Grassroom, you.
It's active. There's activity over there. Things are leaving and...
Is he taking it off or just moving it?
I've seen things leave, but I'm not, you know, I'm not there all day.
Isn't that timeframe coming up?
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't.
I thought it had 120 days or something and that was late.
Do you know that answer, Heather? From the time of the ruling or judgment to have the property cleaned, the UML property?
The what?
The UML property all cleaned up?
It was a period of time, but I don't even, I think he's starting to clean it initially. I know, we had two cases that just recently settled and they both have different time range and different ability for folks to peel.
I guess we should have an update, or at least the building inspector should update us, because if it goes by and we don't follow up on it, we could be back in court again.
Okay. I don't have anything else for you, Randall.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chief Forkman? I guess I'm gonna start with the same question.
Sure.
So can you just let us know, give us a brief update on what's happening over there in the last few months or so and how things are going?
Sure. I mean, fire department has been covering calls and EMS and fire calls, keeping our daytime shifts full. Our call coverage is always some challenges at night, but we're strategizing to do our best with that.
So as far as staffing concerns, do you have any other than the on-call coverage or...
I mean, there's the report that we're waiting for, which has kind of got us stymied a bit until that comes in. So I know they were looking to get that by the end of the month, so it'd be nice to have that in and settled.
Okay, so I guess one of the questions I have is, you know, there's all these reports on the news about people responding to calls and not responding to calls, and I know that it's an on-call department.
Yes.
And that's very clear to me, but perhaps we could just explain to the public who may be watching what that actually means.
Sure. With an on-call department, I mean, we're pretty much, we have a daytime crew of two people that are there seven days a week from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 at night. So if an ambulance call or fire call comes in, we're immediately out of the station.
And that's 8 to 5?
8 to 5.
Monday through Friday?
Yeah. We then have standby coverage, which goes from 6:00 at night until 6:00 in the morning. And that's a trickier, that's a trickier one to fill. In the past, we were always a basic level service. It was just, you know, a basic EMT could go to every call and they would be able to handle every call. Currently, we're a paramedic level service, which is really a professional level service, and so you're looking for professional paramedics to come in and cover calls. To get a paramedic to come in to cover call and to cover 6 until 6:00 in the morning for $50 has its challenges, and so we are currently, you know, we've always been working to try and make those numbers better with more consistent coverage, and we do pretty well.
So, just from my own understanding, because we're a paramedic level...
Yep.
Can just an EMT respond to any call at night, or do you have to be a paramedic?
You can respond, but it'd be a basic level service and you'd still end up calling mutual aid
Okay.
for an intercept.
Okay.
So, I mean, a lot of what we're trying to do and a lot of the agreement that was signed was really just to try and get us more in line with paramedic service, the professional level of service. Because currently, I mean, after 5:00, I mean, there's an hour where there's no one, even if there's a full schedule, there's no one. So the best time to have an accident is between 8:00 and 5:00. There's also another gap from 6:00 in the morning until 8:00 a.m., until that shift comes on, where there's just, even with a full schedule, there's no one there to cover that call effectively. So there's some challenges, but I believe the town is addressing them by trying to go with the paramedic staffing. If we add the second shift, we would actually adjust the hours of the second shift to go from 6:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night, which would actually cover 90% of our calls with professional paramedic coverage. And then we'd only be looking for our standby coverage to cover the block from 10:00 at night until 6:00 in the morning, which is an eight-hour block, and it's a much more reasonable time to get someone to stand by, only because they could go out to dinner with their wife and still come back and, you know, cover eight-hour shift. And we would have no holes. So that's where we're hoping to go with our budget and the direction of the department.
So you know, like, when you need to hire somebody, even a paid position, you have a posting and all of that. Is there any, in any job, but I'm just wondering if you were looking for people who are willing to be on-call that are paramedics that maybe don't...
We have people that come in, and so some of the big problem that we have is gear. So if someone comes in off the street, if they're just working as a basic EMT, depends on their level of experience, they have to go through a certain amount of calls before they can run and work on the ambulance with a partner. And in order for us to be ALS with paramedic, they have to work with a paramedic. So that's kind of the constraints we're under. But you can do that, an EMT can come in. If you want them to cover fire calls also, then fire calls are a little bit more challenging just because you have to outfit them with gear, and we currently are, the members that we have, the 30 members that we have, don't have all adequate gear. Some of it is less than the 10-year NFPA requirement that you have for gear. And with that, they cannot attend like academy courses, some of those things. So I've added into my budget, I've tried to add it into a line item, that $9,000 a year just for gear, and it seems to be a capital expense each year, but that would give us new gear, three sets every year for 10 years, so by the end of 10 years, all 30 people would have compliant gear and you'd start again. If we bring new people in, we have to spend $3,000 on gear for them, and we don't really have that. And so we try and bring people in to keep our coverage, the depth of coverage in place.
I guess my question more was that, do people know that we're looking for paramedics to be on-call? Like, is there like a posting somewhere that says, "Looking for..."
Yeah, we currently have applications. I've received phone calls from people. You know, most of it is basic EMTs. We are looking to move forward with that, but then again, some of our, you know, there's a couple guys that are just in kind of limbo that we're just waiting for the reports to come through so we can make some forward progress.
Okay. That was my question, really. I wanted to, like, just wondered if people know, you know, can you be an on-call paramedic in Southampton, and if so, what do you do?
Oh, absolutely. Come on down. We have applications. Please come down, anyone who's listening who has the credentials for basic or paramedic. Our door is always open for that and we're always happy to hand out an application or review it and get you on the team if we can.
Right. Donna, do you have a question?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
On your on-call, I know that you have people that either sign up or are assigned, you know, standby coverage, okay? So if, say you have an EMT and a paramedic and the dispatch tones out for a call, but no one responds, or only one person responds...
Out of the crew that's on?
Right, so out of the crew that's supposed to be on that night.
Yeah, it's happened just a couple times, and when it does, I follow through with that person to find out what happened.
But I just wonder if, do they all carry beepers or whatever so that...
Well, some of the...
Do they all get the tone when dispatch tones out at night? So if, you know, Johnny is not on-call tonight, but he's available and he could respond, and the man that's on-call doesn't respond, so you only have an EMT and not a paramedic, so the ambulance can't go out without two people on board, there is someone else that's available, but he's technically not on the schedule, can he respond, or does he respond, or is it just...
So if your question is, does the whole department become aware when a call goes out?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a good question. Budgetary restraints are such that radios, and we have just 30 radios. We'd resource from the Agawatt chief who had some radios that he was giving away. There were, he had gotten new ones and these are older ones, but they function for Southampton. And so we've gotten some of his radios and we are reworking some of the frequencies and putting those together. Currently, everyone has a radio, but there's no room for a radio to break. Radios are probably about $700 each. You can go with a paging system. You can go with it separately or in addition to. The nice thing about having a radio is that the medic can, or the basic can respond directly back to you on the radio. With a pager, it's more convenient. People will carry a pager where they won't carry a radio so readily. The pagers are probably about $350 to $400, and so we don't currently provide those, only because if you're on-call, you carry a radio and most of the guys are pretty good about listening to radios. When I came from Belcher Town, one thing that we had was a free program, and I love free. So what it was is that anytime the tones go out, we put a scanner, and the police department has accommodated a scanner for us. That scanner listens for a tone. Anytime the tone goes out, there's about approximately a 30-second delay. It's not an emergency response tool, but it will then send a text to all the firefighters. So we have that sort of redundancy. So if you're not carrying a radio, we don't have pagers, the accommodations that the police have made in dispatch, that text will go out to everyone. So, we're working on that and it's a good, and the more...
Currently, right now, I guess what you're saying is because everyone doesn't have a radio...
No, everyone does have a radio. Everyone has a radio. They're older is our problem. And so we have to work to keep them functioning. And we've gotten some spares, but the spares are older because they were hand-me-downs from another department. So, everyone has a radio. We work to keep them functioning.
Just talking about the radios.
Sure.
I'm looking at the ambulance EMS expenses and you're well below budget here and there's like $23,000 left in the budget. Is that something where you can get a few radios?
Yeah, actually, we're contemplating, because there's one radio that we're looking to get for the ambulance because they make one, it's about $1,000, that you actually can call in, C-Med, and actually call right into the hospital.
I'm thinking about the handheld for the...
Yeah, it's a handheld. That's a handheld radio, but it has the added advantage of being able to call directly into the hospital. And because we've been working hard to try and keep radios functioning, we thought if we bought one radio that had additional capabilities, we could keep that in the daytime shift, would then have the newest radio that would have the additional, while you're working a patient, you could make a call to the hospital if you needed to.
Those $700 radios, which would be a...
That's actually, yeah, that one's probably closer. I just, it's in the, it's getting priced now. It's approximately $1,500 for that particular type. That's why not everyone will get that. It would just be...
What about the $700 handheld ones that we had a mismatch? Can't we use some of that money to buy another?
We can buy, we have to pay for programming, so I'm trying to just utilize the radios that we have, trying to make the stock of radios function, and then we are looking to purchase a number of radios that fits within budget, so...
Money to do that.
Yeah, it'll be probably, my guess, in the venue of about three. Plus, yeah, bless you.
Yeah, I mean, when you got some money, I wouldn't...
Yeah, yeah, well, and the other part is, we've been trying to be conservative with our budget just because I don't like to spend a bunch of money in the beginning of the year and then towards the end of the year, having shortfalls. So just in management, I'm trying to make sure that we have enough, and certainly we would use some for radios.
Yeah, I mean, to me, a radio, a good working radio for somebody on-call is critical.
Yeah, absolutely. Medical supplies, I mean, everything has its importance. And so there is always a balance, but radios are important.
So is there anything else that you needed to spend out of that expense line that you foresaw in the future before the end of the year, other than radios? Like, there's no big expenses that are not paid for yet or bought yet that would potentially put you over?
I mean, there's stuff budgeted through the year. I don't remember exactly when all of the line items for, you know, software and those things are gonna be coming out of there. I know that there's some medical equipment expenses that will be coming out. There's no large-ticket items at this point. We have, there's a grant out that would, written with the AFG that would include a monitor. We'd only put in for one monitor in the override, not in the override, I'm sorry, for the capital expense last year, although we really need two. We've got one that's borrowed. We were, rather than asking for the town to pay for another one prematurely, we're kind of hoping that this grant would actually come to fruition. We were close last year. That grant is for approximately $135,000. We're including some upgrades to our stretchers, some things that are as important as radios, but we can't afford because of the costs of them and it's a large burden on the town. So if that grant is successful, we'll be quite happy.
When do you find out about that?
It tends to open up at the end of April, but unfortunately, they have about a nine-month window, so we didn't get the rejection letter until the day before the last disbursement went out, which means we're close, just, but we missed it last year. So we're hoping we retooled that grant and are hoping that'll be more successful, pared it down, tried to make it a little bit leaner.
Gotcha. Sure.
We did get a grant this year for $15,000 for hose, which is...
That was my question.
Yeah, that's an important one, just because...
Got that hose, huh?
Yeah, but, and just to give you a perspective, it sounds like a lot of money. It actually just did our large diameter hose, which is our supply lines in the truck. It didn't do any of the hand lines. It doesn't do all, we did a little bit with like some of the brush trucks because some of the brush truck hose was extremely deteriorated. So it's a good plus for us. It doesn't take care of absolutely all the problems, so... But it's a good plus and grant money is tremendous, so...
It was good.
Yeah, that was an unforeseen grant that was nice to get.
On that same note, I know that we had requested that all grant information get passed along to...
Yep.
Don, Vicki, did that grant information get passed along?
Well, that grant is no longer current. That grant has been spent.
Okay, okay.
So that was a one-shot deal for hose.
Do those come along often?
I think you did give me some of that.
And I think, yeah, certainly if they need something more, we keep in contact. Certainly. We have some SAFE grants that have been closed out. Should be getting another disbursement from our SAFE grants. We've gotten more money, SAFE is a student awareness of fire education. That grant, we actually had gotten additional funding to do some senior programs with. So that's hopefully expanded for this year and we'll continue to refine that program. Just have a lot of high expectations for that and hoping that we can do more with it still.
Heather?
Just to follow up on what Donna had asked earlier, so if all the employees of the fire department, all 30 of them, have radios and get text messages, I think Donna's initial question was, when a tone goes out, is someone not on-call? Can they respond?
Yes.
And do they respond?
Sometimes.
So if there was a tone that went out tonight, no one was on-call, and Liz, myself, and Donna had radios, would we typically respond? Could we respond? How would I know if Liz doesn't respond or if the on-call people aren't on-call?
Unless we pay them, they're not gonna, we can't make them respond.
But we used to...
Can I finish? If I was, if you were in a meeting and your pager went off, it would be your choice to respond unless you were on-call.
I guess my concern just comes to the fact that when talking to folks who've been in the community a very long time, we used to have a volunteer fire department, and they used to have way more people than they needed show up, and we weren't paying them on-call money at the time. So what changed?
My roots have actually come from the volunteer department. I think with the volunteer department, you really do, when you don't have the expectation of being a paramedic with everything that goes along with a paramedic. In order for us to have paramedics here, they have to work for another, usually another fire department or at least another service. So this job is a second job. We don't have full-time besides myself. It's all just part-time people, which means that they have a full-time job that they're at. Those full-time jobs are often 24, you know, 24-hour shifts that they're doing. So yes, they're getting tones, but if they're on a shift at another department, they're not going to respond. If they've already worked, you know, four shifts in a row and it's their only day off, they're not gonna respond. So I think in the volunteerism, it's a wonderful thing. I think that it really, you know, communities can bring together on it. But as the laws get more restrictive, now gear can only last 10 years. It used to be, I mean, I came up...
But the gear is not related to the paramedic piece. The gear's related to the fire department, correct? They're separated?
The gear is, the fire department and the ambulance department, if you're on the department, we're asking you to respond to both an EMS call or a fire call.
But if you know the call, when the call's toned out, does it come out as need for a paramedic or need for fire? So if I have a tone on me and I have the radio, I'm gonna know right away if it's paramedic. So if I'm paramedic, I should be able to respond irrelevant of gear?
If you're on the department, you should have gear anyway.
But I could, I thought at the beginning of this meeting, you had stated to Liz and the board that you were, the department's looking for paramedics and EMTs. I don't remember that part saying, "But you also have to be a firefighter to join." Don't we want paramedics and EMTs to be on-call and, I guess I don't understand how it relates to the fire department piece?
You've got a barrage of questions and you just need to let me answer a couple in between. Ideally, someone would be well-rounded and we'd get an EMT that was also a firefighter. It's the ideal environment because we are a fire EMS department. If we cannot get that, we do have in our employ folks that are just EMTs, and, you know, no one is full-time, so we pay none of our guys health insurance, vacation time, or sick time. So we are utilizing just EMTs. It does have a cost savings in gear. Everyone is receiving the tone texts, but again, I just need to emphasize, we're not volunteer. These are a professional group. There's a whole lot more training that was required more than 10 years ago. When I came on, there wasn't near the white powder incidents, the hazardous material type incidents. There's a lot of training that's required, and I think part of, when I came in, I really tried to professionalize the department in regards to standardizing training. I don't think it's fair to have firefighters with no standardized training that work with professional firefighters and not try to understand what level each person's at. In the fire department, we're a family. We're a group. We're a team that goes in together and risks lives. If your partner is not trained, that's a liability to your, to the other firefighters and ultimately to the town. So we train firefighters. We have gotten firefighters to go through academy. We encourage EMTs, firefighters, what it will take, whatever someone can offer the town, and we will try and provide the best service that we possibly can with those people that are part of the department.
I have three questions.
Sure.
Okay, so first, I just want to be clear. If you're not on-call, but you do respond...
Yes.
Do you get paid?
Yes, you get a three-hour minimum.
A three-hour minimum, okay.
So, and that wasn't always the case. I mean, that was something that, because when I came here, I mean, this is not a new problem. I mean, it may seem new to some of us here, but this problem of getting response is an age-old problem. I mean, it was back in the department I came from. It's in the department now. When I came, there was only three-hour minimums offered for a small window of time. Now we offer that three-hour minimum anytime that there's a call off of the full-time shift. If it was a budgetary concern, I would have to maybe readdress that, but I feel that the concerns for having manpower available to us, because as Heather just stated, everybody has a pager and has the ability to respond, and I must say, my firefighters do a great job. They do a great job with their dedication to the town. They do a great job with their dedication to the town. They do a great job with their dedication to the job. And, you know, I'm not going to make a guy who's working full-time respond.
Right. So then, if you're on call...
Yes.
And you don't respond...
Yes.
But there's a call...
Yes.
Do you get paid?
No.
So you only...
If someone is on call, and, it depends on the circumstances, I should be careful. If someone is on call, and they are, and they miss a call, and they have something like they were in, taking a shower, I'm gonna investigate every call. If they were on call and did not make the call, every one of those calls will be investigated. If it happens in any kind of pattern, if it happens without a good excuse, then they will get docked their pay. If someone is a one-time offender in a year, and they say that they were in the shower and didn't hear it, they're on shift for 12 hours, you know, so you have to show some leeway.
And so, is all of that documented? And do you know who's on call and doesn't respond? Or do you have all of that documented somewhere?
I know who's on call, and when it's identified that there's a shift missing, then I will, I email that person.
Okay. And then, the same as I had, asked Randall about his revenues and estimated revenues. So currently, fire department inspections, what does that include?
Fire department inspections is, you know, propane tanks, underground tanks, above-ground tanks, tank trucks that come in, whether it be an oil truck, or whether it just be an auxiliary tank that someone uses in a landscaping business. It'll be smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detector inspections, and we have plan review. There's a number of different permits that are required that would fall under the inspection category. And often, it's, you know, if somebody came in for a black powder inspection, you know, for a permit, it would probably get put under the inspection. If we go out to a daycare, or go out to a medical facility that are required by health department to have fire department inspections, that would fall under the inspections.
So your current revenues are at about 39%, so $6,700. Do you anticipate making up any of that difference between now and the year?
I have no control over, you know, I mean, if the real estate market is good, we do more. If somebody, you know, if they're all of a sudden switching from oil to propane, if there's a gas line that comes through, I mean, you know, we may have, you know, permits that ebb and flow.
Okay.
So it's hard to control that. Burning permits are a big part of that equation, and it's burning season now.
And how much is a burning permit? And when can I get one?
Good question, because if people are listening, that's probably a wonderful thing. The burning season goes from January 15th until May 1st. It's all regulated by the state. So the state tells you when you can burn, when you can't burn. You can burn between 10 o'clock in the morning, has to be out by 4 o'clock in the afternoon. When I came here a year and a half ago, the only time that they were issuing permits were two-day permits on the weekends. That's a challenge for a lot of folks, because not everybody works when has weekends off with a set schedule. And so, one thing that I'd worked to initiate was to have a burning permit that was actually a season pass. So for $25, you could get a season pass. The parameters of the permit are that you have to call and talk to a firefighter. You can't just leave your name on an answering machine, because we need to check with the state every day to see if they're allowing burning.
So before you start burning on that day, you need to call the fire department?
You need to call the fire department. And the challenge is, the state, they're, the DEP is for air quality control. And so, their concerns are that there's no pollution. So they like it when there's a windy day, and they'll always allow burning. But the challenge for us is, we don't like burning on windy days. So like tomorrow is probably looking like a red flag day, where it's a higher level of potential for wildfire. And so, although DEP will allow burning on that day, we probably won't, just to maintain...
And if you only want a one-day burning permit, can you still get that?
That would be the $10, $10 one, that's good for one to two days, that's only available on the weekends.
Okay.
And, right, is it...
And, yeah, that's a good point.
Check-only?
Yeah, it's a check-only.
Okay.
Yep, and it's all payable to the town.
Could you buy the burning permit for this weekend tomorrow? Or do you have to buy it on the day?
You have to buy it on the day.
Okay, just checking. Thanks.
Yep, sure. But it allows more people to burn, and I kind of like it, because now you have people burning during the week. It's not everyone burning on the weekend. It doesn't tax our resources with personnel going to brush fires, because on a day, when you, when it starts nice and calm, and you allow burning, a big gust of wind comes through, and you can have a number of calls that just, you know, totally tax all your manpower.
What time can you come get the permit on Saturday?
Between 8:00 and 11:00. We also expanded the hours by another hour. It used to be 8:00 to 10:00.
Not that I was charged with finding out any of that information today, but...
No, 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 no. And hopefully, that makes it easier, more accommodating for people.
Okay, a question.
Sure.
You're talking a lot about when you get a call for an emergency after hours, but there's still one segment of that I'm not sure of.
Sure.
Probably just me. Somebody calls in?
Yes, 911.
Yeah, dispatcher?
Yes.
Okay, I have a call, such-and-such going on. The dispatcher sends a tone out?
Yeah, just to give you an instance, there was one that had just made, where the gentleman had gone to the news before contacting the department. And I made a point to go down and talk to him. I got in front of the TV cameras, not really making a point to do that, but certainly, will do what I need to do. And I wanted to show him, I mean, although we had, we had a hole, and that's unfortunate, but it does happen in every department, there was only a three-minute delay in the call. And then the call was automatically, with a written agreement, it's automatically transferred over to Westfield.
Well, that was my question. So who, so if nobody calls back into the dispatcher, he or she knows to send it to another department?
Yes, that's a standard thing through dispatch.
So there was a standard protocol?
Oh, absolutely. And that's actually part of the state law. So the state law, which says that we need to have a full ALS department in order to keep our license within three years, that's one of the state laws, and the agreement that the select board had signed.
It almost seems like they were saying the tone went out, and then we just let it drop, but in fact, it's not the case. You have a dispatcher that then calls?
Now, that's one thing that's been going up today, I just wanted to clarify, that despite misleading news reports, no 911 calls went unanswered.
That's correct.
Our professional, highly-trained dispatchers answered every single 911 call that comes in. If they get overwhelmed with numerous calls at the same time, we have backup communities that the overflow 911 calls automatically go to, so they will answer them. As a quick example, one time we got flooded with calls about a 911 call about a head-on accident, we turned in front of Big Y. Turned out it was in South, it was their overflow that came in. They had a Big Y in, we turned, and we all went flying down to our end, and it was, you know, so it worked. The system had backups, checks and balances in place, and no 911 call went unanswered.
Yeah, that three-minute gap, very understandable, but there's a process that...
Absolutely. And honestly, with that type of call, he could have gotten a response, because the call department people have to come from home. There's almost a seven-minute delay from just leaving from the station, which seven minutes is a long time, if you've got heart muscle, or just had suffered a stroke and quality of life. It's a long time. But with Westfield, they've got a full-time department, a three-minute delay, they're toned right away. I checked the records, it took them 11 minutes to get here, but that's unusual for Westfield. I think that usually, they're here quicker. And often, if our call department had functioned, you know, absolutely perfectly, and there was no gap at all that day, we probably would have been a few minutes behind what Westfield ended up responding. A normal situation.
I understand there was two police officers on site first.
Yeah, and the police do a great job. They've got a lot of guys that are trained, EMTs, they help us out, they got a lot of the things rolling before we get there.
They have a defibrillator in the cruisers?
Right.
Okay. A question, way back in the beginning, did you say there's two staff on, eight to five every day?
Correct.
Yourself?
Oh, no, additional, additional to myself.
Okay, so what level are they?
There has to be at least one paramedic on call every day.
Okay. And who would the second person be?
It can be another paramedic, or it can be a basic level.
Okay, so, and then yourself?
And myself.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep, sure.
Jackie?
I was just, what are the laws regarding burning trash and the associated fines?
Yeah.
You can burn leaves, but what...
Yeah, it gets, there again, it's all regulated by the state. DEP has regulations that allow you to burn trimmings. Theoretically, it's not for clearing of brush, so if you cleared a lot of land, it's not really, you're not supposed to burn that. You're not supposed to burn trash, because there again, DEP is all about air quality. So, you know, you're not supposed to burn trash. There are fines, and we can take someone to court after a certain amount of offenses. We could actually pursue getting a ticketing, a ticketing book, which works well if you have a lot of infractions. We, you know, if we had, you know, if that was a problem for us, we may get the ticketing book, it'd be another tool that we could use to, you know, if there was a problem with people burning trash. I think, I do try and take the humanistic approach, where you go and just, you know, say, I mean, you can have a campfire is the other thing. And so usually, the line is, if you will cook and eat whatever it is, then that's an okay fire. And probably, the biggest thing is invite your neighbor, you know, be neighborly, so don't make a fire that's gonna, you know, smoke someone out, or make them have problems. And if it is a continued problem, I have worked in the past with like Board of Health, because Board of Health has a little bit more teeth when it comes to some of that kind of thing. So if there's a nuisance, it gets pursued. Usually, it's a combination between police, Board of Health, and fire.
Just looking at your budget in general, it's either at the level it should be at or well below, so that's a good job on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there anything that we can do to help you right now?
Yeah, mostly just, you know, just work, I know that we're looking to get reports back by the end of the month. It'd be nice to, you know, move forward with some of the issues at hand and do our job.
Is there anything lacking, as far as our job with you, that we could do better right now?
No, I mean, biggest thing is really communication. I mean, certainly, if you folks have, you know, something, I know that often, you know, I've heard from my wife, through a friend, that the select board had asked for something at one of your meetings. I know that Heather had set up department meetings where we all go there, and at the department meeting, I'd asked her if she could inform us of those events when you folks are looking for us. And she said that we could watch the video on TV, which is a little bit hard to do. So if it was possible to have her share, whatever was with my department at a department meeting, that would be a helpful thing. I think communication is important.
Okay. Great. If there are no other questions? Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Chief Silvernell, you're up. Thanks for coming. You sat through too, so I guess you can see which direction we're gonna go here.
It's probably subject to change.
I hope not. So if you want to just give us an overview of how things are going right now, anything new, changes, or updates that you want us to be aware of?
Well, probably the most important thing you ought to be aware of is, because of our fiscal situation and the projection of going into the next year level funded, it's caused some panic amongst some of the lower senior officers, less senior officers. One of our outstanding officers, who is the lowest ranking officer on the department, is seeking employment elsewhere, and it looks like he's probably gonna get hired elsewhere. He's got a family support, and he can't take the risk of being laid off. As the board is aware, the only reason that the police department avoided layoffs, we really can't do furloughs, last year was because I opted to try to help the wage line item by giving up, getting a cruiser last year. And so we had diverted that cruiser money into wages, and that helped us bridge the gap for this year. As you look at the numbers, we're really only 1% in the good, behind where we should be, if you go by those numbers. Those numbers really aren't, you know, accurate reflective on what it takes to run the department. But, you know, we've scaled back, cut back on overtime, cut back on patrols. That's not what I like to see the police department doing, but that's what had to be done this year to try to save on costs. And so, you know, that's a fragile balance there. It's, you know, and it's not to say that that's not gonna change, and then we'll do worse going in the rest of the year. It all depends on call volume, and court, and overtime, and things like that. But as it stands right now, we'll probably not be over in police wages by the end of the fiscal year, but then we may be over, I don't know.
I was just thinking, it looked, I mean, this is the third time I've looked at a budget, and I think every time at this year, we say, oh, police wages are over, but I'm looking at it and saying, it doesn't look like that's the case at this point.
But it's subject to change. One of the difficulties in public safety is that, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, and we can't predict how many emergency calls, and how many arrests, and how much overtime we're gonna have to spend investigating crime or going to court. It's all an unknown factor.
Right. So I've asked everybody about their expenses, and yours are well underspent at this point too. Do you anticipate anything major coming down the line, or any bills that aren't paid that...
Well, I don't anticipate anything major coming down the line, but who knows? A rear end could go on a cruiser, we're driving, you know, cruisers with some high mileage on. And, you know, we've held back. I had an officer come into my office yesterday and showed me the bottom of his boots, and there was absolutely no tread left on his boots, and asked if he could go get a new pair of boots. You know, the officer's been very cooperative, this, you know, as you're aware, their contract agreement allows them up to $900 a year in uniform allowances, and the officer had been very cooperative in keeping those costs down. But this isn't the first year we've done that. They've been very cooperative in years past, and everybody's done their part to try to stay within the budget, but it's just one of those things, it's kind of hard to do the job we're doing and stay within the budget. I would take a second here to also point out, it will, you'll hear from me Thursday night, I imagine, but it's gonna be my recommendation to forego a cruiser again this year, in favor of allocating money in wages to retain police officers. As you know, we typically only have two officers on duty. The loss of this officer, taking another job, which if we're gonna go level funded, we'd be laying that guy off anyway, so we'll be saving unemployment costs if he takes another job. But that's gonna reduce us to having shifts with only one officer on duty again. And I addressed some of these issues and concerns in my town report, my annual report for the town book. I don't like seeing this. And I wouldn't want to be the police officer. I did it for many years, years ago here, by myself, going to calls, and it's not a good feeling, going to a domestic, going to a fight, going to a problem by yourself. And the direction we're going is, you guys are putting officers in that situation again, if you don't fund wages. And so I don't want a new cruiser. We'll continue to drive the cars that we have, try to keep them on the road. I want officers. I need officers. The town needs officers. I don't want a new public safety complex if it means we're gonna lose police officers. What good is a fancy building if you don't have people to staff the building? You know, I look at the money that we're spending, I'll be the first one to say that we need to do something with the building, or the building, the basement that we're operating in is despicable. However, if it means we're losing police officers, I don't want a new safety complex. We're spending money on engineering fees, we're spending money on land acquisition. I want officers, not buildings.
So one of the questions I asked everybody else had to do with the revenues, and the revenues in the police, for the police department, is that tickets and fines, is that, what else comes?
Well, the revenues come from tickets. That's something that, in my opinion, is unpredictable, because fines are, can be waived by the courts, they can be reduced by the courts. So because an officer writes a ticket for a certain amount, it doesn't mean that that's what the modus is gonna be held accountable for. And most often, tickets are, fines are reduced at North Hampton District Court or sometimes found not responsible and, you know, they're, they're just waived entirely, so.
Is that all that's encompassed in that?
Pretty much. We have $5 accident reports.
Oh, it's not?
There's gun permits.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I thought it was really smart.
No, I wanted to make sure that we were talking about the right line.
Keep going, I'm in the right place now.
So there's gun permits, which I guess you could call revenue. You know, the town only gets a percentage of what the state takes in for the gun permits and we keep that portion. It's supposed to be intended for administrative costs, but there's some, a conflict between the legislation and the Department of Revenue's interpretation on where that money's supposed to go. And so currently goes into the general fund.
Well, yeah, one thing you said, Chief, you said you, you cut back on patrols to save money. What, what does that mean?
That means that you have not seen officers in patrol cars patrolling the town as they were in previous years. If you have officers out patrolling, they're gonna find crime. When they find crime, they're gonna make arrests. They're gonna have to stay beyond their shifts to finish police reports. They're gonna have to go to court to testify. They're gonna have to do investigations. And it has a domino effect on, in increasing the impact of the overall budget. So patrolling leads to wear and tear on the cruisers, gasoline consumption. You gotta pay for all that. Patrolling leads to increased overtime. And so I've had to pull everybody back and we're not doing what we really should be doing. And like I said a few minutes ago, I don't like it. That's not why we're here. We're supposed to be out covering the town, but we can't afford to cover the town. We used to do house vacation checks. That means we'd have to send an officer out who's on duty to go hit every house that's on vacation that we're aware of and go do a check. It'd be nice if we could do it, but we gotta cut back.
So I guess that's kind of a...
Catch 22.
Catch 22 would be a good word, so.
And nothing...
What are officers doing, are they at the station more?
Well, the officers do go out. All went along and all last summer, beginning in July 1st, they were advised to go out and get visibility, pick some strategic locations to get visibility. We don't want the town to appear unguarded. And, but watch your mileage, watch the unnecessary idling of the cruiser where, where possible. I don't expect an officer in a vest and all the gear that they have on to sit somewhere and monitor traffic in, in August sweating their heads off. That's not a reasonable request.
It almost seems the old penny wise and pound foolish.
Absolutely.
If we spent money, we would, I mean, if, if you had more wages or if you actually went out there and patrolled, we'd catch more crime, like you said. So actually, we're not doing justice to our citizens by not going out patrolling.
Currently, when I looked at the numbers, a month and a half or so go, you know, during budget preparations and whatnot, we're down 50% in arrests. We're down 50% in citations because we're not out there. We're not doing what we're supposed to be doing, what we should be doing.
Are more people getting mugged, robbed, or whatever else they were doing that we were catching?
Say that again?
Were more people getting robbed or mugged that we're not catching them? Is that what you're saying?
Knock on wood, we haven't had much for house breaks this year. That has been too bad. That's one of the reasons why I wanted cruisers parked in strategic locations, give the appearance that we're out, you know? So, you know, again, things are flexible insofar as trying to predict what crimes are gonna occur.
And you're, you wanna forego a cruiser again? I mean, I think this is just tumbling down. It almost seems like we need to give you a cruiser so you get some of those people back on the street, even though we don't increase the wages over level funded.
Well, we need the wages to pay the person to go on the street.
Right, but if you, if you lose one officer based on the wages that are being budgeted now or projected, and we give you a cruiser, at least the people that you have will have at least one new cruiser, if not two, out of stabilization. Seems like taking care of the people you have so that they can go out, even though maybe one less, depending what happens.
I agree, but in the real world, when we're faced with the budget that's being allocated, we can't have everything, you know, so.
Some money's coming out of the capital stabilization account, that's the cruiser. So it really doesn't tie into the operational. So we could give you a cruiser or two, probably.
Granted, but this year, you put 35% in capitalization, stabilization capital and, and...
Operational, yeah.
Operational. Otherwise, perhaps those monies could have been allocated directly to the department to take care of wages.
So can I just ask this question? I don't, I don't want people to get laid off. I don't wanna see departments get cut. I don't wanna see people get furloughed. I don't wanna see any of that. However, we can only manage the money that the town gives us to manage, which is the budget that we currently have. And so my question to you is, because I kinda value what you have to say, Chief, and I respect you. Where would we get the money? Other than from the capital stabilization account, where do we get the money to do that?
Well, here's my thought on that. This year, the select board, following the recommendations of the Department of Revenue to be fiscally responsible and to start a savings account, start putting money aside for a rainy day, the select board decided to follow that advice. This isn't the first year the DOR has made that recommendation. It's been a number of other years and we haven't done that. But also, by the same token, through the history of the failed overrides, the voters and taxpayers in Southampton have spoken loud and clear to the select board that they don't want a savings bank. They don't want rainy day fund. They want you to supplement the budget of the departments each year by spending free cash when it becomes certified. That's the way we've operated for years. That's the way we've managed to get through. That's the way we fixed the short budgets. Is it fiscally responsible? No, Department of Revenue concurs that it isn't. So the voters have been loud and clear, they don't want you to save their money. They want you to spend their money. They don't want us having large bank accounts. So my take on that is, is that, you know, I have to wonder why this year... I understand why, but I have to ask, why did we so-called go cold turkey with splitting, taking 70% of that free cash and putting 35 and 35% in to stabilization? Then whatever the remainder was, it went to the Norris and, and I don't know if it went to the regional now, but to meet minimum net school spending. So we kinda went cold turkey this year. Schools got taken care of, police, fire, highway, town hall got told, tough luck, suck it up, make it work.
That's an interesting take on the way the vote went. Because that, you know, you hear about the way, you know, the voters have made it very clear they don't wanna spend any more money. But I have yet to hear somebody say they've made it very clear that they wanna spend all your money. But I guess it kinda, it's a different way, I guess, you know, just a different take on the decision that they made, I guess. Donna?
Technically, you can still spend, like the operational stabilization, it just has to go to town meeting. So it's really, even though it's not left in just the free cash, undesignedated pool, it can still be spent, you know, by vote of town meeting. However, you know, I, I just think that part of the reason that we're in, the financial mess that we're in is because we were repeatedly taking free cash to balance the budget. And you can't, you can't do that year after year when then the free cash isn't, isn't, you know, certified at that same level. And then you're obligated because you've increased your budget. So what's level funded next, one year, the next year, you're, you can't even meet that because you don't have the free cash to supplement them. I mean, it's just a vicious circle. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. I guess, I don't think that anyone here is hoping to have a million dollar savings account and that we're gonna save all this money and not spend it. I just think that also to, to be solid financially and to be able to have a good bond rating, we need to show that we're being financially responsible with the money that we do have. And I, I think that that's our aim.
What's your take on asking, so if you were going, maybe not create a new, if you're gonna create a new position, the thought and conversation has gone around a couple of times, to create a new position, you ask for an override. Would it, what's your thought on, and I'm not saying to do this, I'm just wondering what your opinion is, to ask for an override in order to keep a position? So rather than have to lay off an officer, you ask for an override for, you know, X amount of dollars, which would maintain your staff the way, at where it is now?
The trouble with that is it'll be too late to do that. You were, you know, you don't have time to have an override now before July 1st.
Right.
So that layoff is gonna take place before you get to address trying to save that position.
You know, another, I don't, when you're talking about the capitalization, putting into the capitalization stabilization specifically is that was almost depleted. So there, there was not gonna be any money left for anybody. So when your cruiser goes, a highway plow goes, there was no money. So we need that, you know, to keep things going.
No, I, I understand the concept behind it and, and I'm not saying that I entirely disagree with that. I guess I also wonder, you know, did we need to go 70%? I know there was a desire to build that up and build it up quickly. You know, could we have gone 50%? Could we have gone 40% of free cash and then doled out a little bit to, you know, the rest of us?
The answer is yes, but it was decided that that was the right amount to put in.
But it doesn't mean it's not a conversation that can happen in the future.
But I think Donna is right in the sense that we finally decided we needed to bite the bullet and this was it. And, and this is where the pain is, I hate to say it, but, yeah.
Go ahead, Heather.
I was just gonna say, on the free cash policy, it was 35% for capital stabilization and that was a decision the board had made. They wanted it to be slightly more than operating because they thought there were a lot of things that we need to fund a cruiser, other issues that were coming up with other town departments. The 25% is for operating stabilization. As Donna alluded to earlier, that's another thing that goes to our financial health. 10% went to our OPEB liability, which is something we're starting to get hit on. We had an assessment about two years ago, we're gonna have another assessment this year on the OPEB piece. And then the rest was utilized for what free cash is supposed to be, which is one-time expenses. So the problem again comes with if you're funding the budget with a non-recurring source of revenue, you're also only supposed to utilize the free cash for a one-time hit. So it was, oh, shoot, we didn't put enough money into winter roads, winter wages in order to be able to deficit spend, so that's what we did. Our man numbers came in lower than we thought and we're not gonna have enough to meet net school spending. We're kinda getting nervous here about getting a penalty. We better fill, we better take care of that. So it comes back to the financially savvy approach and trying to be fiscally responsible. And I think Donna was right when she had stated, you know, we kinda set ourselves down the wrong path several years ago when we always balanced with free cash. Other communities do it too. It's, it's not like Southampton said, you know, let's be unique here. But it's also not a good thing to do. And I think last year, although it was very hard for many departments, we started going to the direction of, okay, we can actually afford what we have. So that, I think, was the start with that piece. And, you know, from there, it's, okay, well, let's reassess. Maybe it's a good time to look at things and see how we're doing and see what we need and see what we can adjust to figure out how, at the end of the day, to be able to spend what we actually have coming in.
I have a question pertaining to fire department. I'm wondering if, do other departments have police officers that are paramedics? Like cross-trained in any way? Is that something?
There may be, I don't know of any. I don't know of any.
I just didn't know if sometimes police officers were also paramedics and could act in both capacities, if, if that was something that we'd ever thought about.
Years ago, there were some police departments that actually ran the ambulance service.
Right.
West Springfield was one of them. And so, you know, those police officers had, you know, a high degree of training in that field. But if, over the years, the trend has gone away to where it's primarily fire departments that... In fact, I don't know of a police department that runs an ambulance service anymore.
I just, I just wondered, since generally the police are, you know, when we do have gaps or something, the police always responds. If, if they happen to be paramedic, it might help the town out a little bit.
Yeah, just some of the problems you have with paramedics, number one, it's a, it's a two-year program that you have to go through and then there's a lot of recertification that you need to do. You need to do a certain, a minimum number of calls, which honestly, if we had someone full-time paramedic in Southampton, they would not get enough call volume to obtain their license.
Gotcha.
So in order for us to have paramedics with the call volume, they have to work in front of the service.
I see, okay. Are there any other questions for the...
I have a general question for all the department heads. In light of what just happened with the fire department, do you think that the department heads and the select board should have tighter communications so that the town people feel more comfortable when a situation like that arises? That we need to have some kind of public statement out quicker? I mean, rather than just waiting till, I mean, you know what I'm saying? Like working on a communication skills to the public so they understand that we are here, we're working hard and that, you know, it's not as bad as the media might portray us? General question, on how we can fix that.
Well, I guess that would lead me into, can I go back to that question? Because I think I, I might have a helpful solution while you guys are all here, maybe.
Good.
But first, is there anything that we can do to help you better at the moment? Is there anything you need from us that we're not doing for you?
Yes, I need more money in wages.
Okay, other than that?
That's all I want.
Okay, so here's my question for the department heads.
We're gonna buy a printer for money with our stabilization account, so we can do that for you.
That was one of the things I was thinking. Unfortunately, I can't print money.
I know.
So there's, and I can't remember where this conversation came up, but there's a liaison to the Conservation Commission, the PQB, to every board and commission. But there is no liaison to the departments. And so I'm wondering if you think it would be helpful if there was a point person for your department from the Board of Selectmen, so that when there was an issue or there was something that you need to talk about, you didn't have to wait till Tuesday, you didn't have to get on the agenda. I mean, obviously you have to get on the agenda, but your first line of defense would be to call, Chief, I'm your liaison, you call me. Chief Workman, Jackie's your liaison, you call Jackie. And so that there's constant communication rather than wait, having to wait for all of us to be in the same room.
I, I think that can be a positive thing, but, you know, I've been around here a lot of years and typically in May, when, after elections and the board reorganizes, throughout the years from time to time, that idea comes up and, and different select board members get appointed as liaisons to various departments. And it's okay for a couple of months and then it fades off and then it goes away.
Have you had that before? Has that, it has happened in the past?
Yeah, we've done that many times over the years.
I would almost think the chair would be the common liaison point.
Well, I don't disagree. I mean, I guess I try as hard as I can to, I mean, I talk to Chief Silvernell. I talk to Randall often. I don't talk to Chief Workman as often as I talk to other department heads. But, I mean, I will say that it can be a little overwhelming. I mean, if you have three or four major departments and they all have an issue at one time and you also have a full-time job and another liaison to three or four other committees, that could be a lot. So I'm just trying to say, you know, if you had even one or two people that were specific to major department heads, it may open the lines of communication better than they have been. Because although maybe some people think this conversation tonight is, you know, could be pointless, I think that it's kinda positive because at least we're, we're talking where we might not have talked before. And so if there, you know, one or two...
If we have regular meetings like we've talked about, it makes sense.
But there are things that come up during the week and it would be helpful, you know, we're talking about the fire department because it happened to be in the media, but if it was something with the police department and, you know, you don't wanna wait till tonight to talk about it.
Isn't that what we have a town administrator for?
Exactly.
It, it is, I'm...
And she's, yeah, I mean, she's here all day long, so that seems to be a good conduit. If it needs to be elevated, she sure can elevate it or the department head can elevate it directly.
Or communicate with us to tell us what's going on.
Yeah, but if, if the department head said, well, I need to talk to the select board, then the chair, but otherwise...
I guess it just seems to me like we spend a lot of time going to a lot of other meetings. And it might be helpful if there was one or two people specific to each department so that when the chief is having, you know, a staff meeting and thinks we need to know, one of us goes. And it doesn't always have to go through Heather, it's just a way to keep the board apprised.
The, the issue with that's gonna be is that these departments are working during the day and nobody can get there during the day if you're working a regular job. And that's where a town administrator is here during the day and they have department meetings.
I don't disagree, I was just throwing the idea out there.
No, it's a good idea, but can we logistically do it?
We could try.
That's why I was wondering what the, what the department heads thought. I guess I see what you think. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't.
I've seen it be quite successful with other towns where it was not just town administration, it was, it was like someone from each, you know, member of the board, they're kind of divvied it up. And I think it made it more personal and, you know, it has the potential to fade away. But I think it can be an advantageous relationship.
Now, how did they do it during the day?
Well, most of the questions aren't necessarily, you know, the immediate immediate answer to, I mean, there's something that goes on within the communication that you touch base as best as you can if you need advice, if you need to just kinda go back and forth. And it just keeps, why is it a community issue?
I mean, I guess I, you know, we have the conversation about how do you give a performance evaluation to departments where you don't know what's going on? But this may be one of the ways that at least there's somebody who has that open line of communication within the department that can say, you know, this is what I saw and this is what I've noticed and can work on it in between.
I, I think there can be an advantage to that in that, that that particular person can really get to know that department and get to know what that department's needs are. There can be more of, more, you know, discussion back and forth. Maybe that, and it'd be great for that person to be able to come to the department and see what's going on. I know the basement of the old abandoned town hall's scary, but nobody ever comes over there. And you've been over a couple of times, but...
I like to bring my kids over.
You know, I think it can work, but again, it has to be maintained. It, because it's gonna have the propensity to fade away and, and, you know, doesn't get pursued. But, I mean, if it's, you know, if it's, you know, had some effort put into it, I think that it could be positive.
Right. Randall, do you have anything to add? Do you want a liaison?
Yeah, and I'm sure if anybody wants to stop by, our town of the Woodsville, I would recommend going.
Well, I mean, maybe we could draft a form, like they do for, if you wanna have a project, there's a form, but if you wanna go to CPC or, you know, any committee, there was a form and you was on the agenda and we reviewed it, I think...
I guess my idea was that when we reorganize in May, we just add fire, highway, and police department to the list of people that are liaisons to and then you are required to report. I mean, even monthly would be better than what we have going on now. You know, it doesn't have to be every week, but...
Because is it to say that, like, the Conservation Commission is more important because you guys can go to their meetings, but they just kinda have to fend for themselves? 'Cause is it to say that, like, the Conservation Commission is more important because you guys can go to their meetings, but they just kinda have to fend for themselves?
Well, exactly, I mean, this is, this is the budget, this is, this is, you know, really what's happening.
Sorry, I didn't mean to offend the Conservation Commission.
I just said that, 'cause it's always listed first alphabetically, and it's the first thing I see, okay?
Yeah, I was just, you know, so they go there to find out what, you know, you guys are kinda working on, and then.
I mean, it would be nice to know what you guys are working on.
And they do bigger things, but you guys are the meat of what's going on, and so it's kinda like, oh, well, you're the ugly stepchild, we don't really wanna deal with you, you know what I mean? It's like, you, they might feel that important, because you guys are worried about all these other little things instead of the bigger people, I don't know.
Just a thought.
But still, that one person in the Select Board has to have a general consensus from the rest of the board before they make a public statement or do anything.
I think it's just a way to communicate between departments to the Select Board, but that's all.
But I'm talking about any kind of emergencies or employer relations, it should be discussed.
I think if it got to that point, you need to go to the town administrator and whoever the chairman of the board is, and communicate at that point, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that the liaison is the person that you go to when you're having a personnel issue, or you're having a, you know, somebody's filed a complaint or whatever, I'm saying, this person is there so that if there's something that you need help with, that you need, you know, an answer to something, or just to see what's happening in the department.
Go to their department.
Go to the meeting, that's all, you're around, you're.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a email address that goes to the three, the five of you? That they would be able to use, 'cause I know that's how parents are able to work with PTOs from the different schools.
Yes.
If they had something come up that they could send it.
I mean, the fact of them, there is that, the fact that matters is sometimes, some people have better working relationships with other people than a whole group, you know, and so to, to build that relationship is kind of what I'm looking to do here.
Maybe, once we get any new members, we can.
Start in May. Chief, anything else for us?
Well, the other thing I just wanna point out was, if you looked at the percentages of the budgets, so historically Dispatch.
Are you on the expense report?
I'm sorry?
Are you on the expense report? That percentage, just checking.
So, historically, over the past few years, the, you know, wages to run the Dispatch Center has been around a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a year. And, so this year was allocated at one-seventy-two. But historically, one-seventy-two isn't gonna cut it, and it's not gonna cut it this year as well. So, I anticipate that we will be running out of Dispatch wage money by the end of the year.
Okay.
So just so that you're aware of that.
And what is it budgeted for next year?
Well, if it's level funded, it'll be one-seventy-two. And so, where we're off, really, in Dispatch, if you look at the numbers, is about a payroll. And that almost equates the contracted increases that they got July first, so, you know, we level funded, but yet there was contractual obligations that we weren't funded for, that we have to absorb within the allocation.
Okay. Good point. Thanks.
Liz?
Yes?
I think Vicki might have a breakdown with communication wages over the past couple of years.
Oh, you know what, I didn't print it, I'm sorry, I worked on it all this afternoon, I, but basically, it's like what the chief said, is like, if you take the average of how much we've been paying, seven thousand, seventy, seven thousand dollars a pay period, and you extrapolate it over what's left, that's kinda what you've been over.
And make sure at one payroll?
Yes.
Yeah, the average has been about one-eighty-four, one-eighty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't print it, I should've, sorry.
I have no more questions.
But last year, we were able to cover that with police wages that, you know, due to, you know, maybe you didn't have overtime or whatever, that we were able to cover that last year.
And that's the, historically, the way it's been, some years, we've been over on wages in police and under on Dispatch, and some years, we've been over on Dispatch and under in police, like last year, you know?
That was last year, a couple years ago was big because of the new contract, it was a big number. But we had to take that from other sources, 'cause you don't know your overtime and stuff.
And, and again, that's the difficult part is, you know, going into the year, I mean, just look how close police wages are with all the efforts that we've made to not spend wage money. You know, we've even skipped going to some traffic appeals, so some motorists that got tickets, we didn't go and follow through on court to, you know, follow the case through. And that doesn't go over well with the courts either, you know, understandably, the judges look at that as, you know, police department doesn't show up, you're wasting the motorist's time, you're wasting the court's time, and they're just dismissing the case. You know, and, you know, we don't write, we're not ticket-heavy here, we don't, you know, we're not out there just to write tickets and find people, I strongly believe that the purpose of the Police Department is not to generate revenue for the town, the purpose of the Police Department is to, you know, practice reasonable, you know, enforcement techniques, and make the town safer, we're not out to whack every person that drives by, you know? We're not a collection agency, so, we don't write a lot of tickets. We write tickets that are deserved, I guess you could say, I mean, if you look, every year in the town report, I always put in what the averages are, and I don't know if anybody ever reads that, but the average speed that somebody actually gets a ticket for is because they've gone sixteen or seventeen miles an hour over the limit, they're not cheesy tickets, they're not getting, you know, five miles an hour for, over the hour for the, for, the speed limit, you know, they're, they're hefty speeds, you know, so.
All right. Are there any other questions for the Chief?
I just have a question for Memorial Day, May twenty-fifth. How many officers can you have to help the parade?
I, I usually provide six officers every year to take care of all the traffic control. And that doesn't actually cover every intersection, we kinda have to leapfrog along with the procession to stay ahead of, you know, where the procession's going, so that we can block the traffic.
We're so fast, you know, it's hard to keep up with us.
So, but yes, six officers is what we typically use to, to do that, sometimes seven.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Liz, yes, just on the communication wages, at one of the last finance team meetings, we did discuss the communication wages, 'cause that was a concern, we were aware that it's gonna be under, and that it'll be under next year. I think what we talked about trying to do was figure out if we can, the closest to the dollar we can get with, you know, who gets a raise next year, who's got a step increase, and kinda try to figure out, you know, what does the picture really need to look like, you know, if there's usually a vacation that's paid out, what's, you know, what's the ballpark figure, so we can actually put in what we think it's going to hit.
Okay.
One of the things that's important to note about the Communication Center is that you have X amount of shifts around the clock, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Those four full-time employees have earned X amount of vacation time, X amount of sick time, X amount of personal time, that all has to be backfilled, 'cause we can't not staff Dispatch. So it's fairly inflexible, you know, I can try to manipulate things in the Police Department and try to control gas spending and overtime, but the Dispatchers, in the Dispatch Center, doesn't really have that luxury. It's pretty well a set number, and that's, you know, what we need to allocate in order to make it work.
Is that one dispatcher?
One dispatcher on duty.
Twenty-four-seven.
Only a few times a year in significant storms do we bring a second dispatcher in. But, you know, we have had Dispatchers that have gone out on a, on a unrelated to the job injury, and then we have, you know, end up with a deficit with that, because we're, you know, paying that person to be on a seventy-five percent disability, and, and then we have to still backfill that shift, we just don't have the luxury of not filling that shift, someone's gotta be there.
I think we're done now.
Okay.
Are there any other questions that anybody has for the department heads while they're in the same room?
Thanks for coming in.
So, before you go, did you give them these questions yet?
You have the only copy.
Oh, I have the only copies, I'm sorry, I should've done this. These questions, Thursday night, we're meeting with Finance to talk about budgets, and I have one for the Police Department and one for the Fire Department, and these are questions that the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Team, the Finance Committee had, that we didn't feel we could talk about last week, until you had had the opportunity to look at them and read them and come prepared on Thursday evening at six.
It is at six.
At six o'clock, Fire, yep. So these are just questions that we had, and conversations that we wanted you to see. And Randall, we wanna talk about mowing. No, on Thursday. Adding lines, not adding lines, who pays for lines, where's the money come from, who's gonna pay for it? Who's gonna mow the grass, where are they gonna mow the grass, when are they gonna mow the grass, how are they gonna mow the grass? If we could, thank you, Chiefs. Anything grass-related. So any of your comments and concerns would be welcome Thursday night. Is there anything else the Board of Selectmen would like to discuss at the moment?
No, I've got the master planning tomorrow night, so I'll go to that.
It's not tomorrow. Can you please tell me your email?
I will later.
After, and I will send you, sorry. It's next, it's next Wednesday, and I, I kept trying to send it to you, and I couldn't find your email, so it's next Wednesday, you're off the hook tomorrow.
Okay.
I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming, Vicki.
Hey Liz, Thursday, I might not be here.